Welcome to another edition of the conversation here at the Decoden where we are taking a look at some of the candidates for this year's Ward County Commissioners. I'm joined by Jedidiah Raider. Did I say your name right?
You got it. It's good to be here, sir. Thank you for inviting me.
Absolutely. So you have are this lifelong politician. Just kidding. You're new to the political scene. Why did we decide to get into politics?
Well, to be honest with you, um, I have always followed politics a little bit and I'm like, you know, what do I really want to accomplish? And then after, uh, um, in life and then, you know, I was a store manager. I was, uh, I'm successful at retail as far as that goes. Yeah. I've been, you know, small box, big box retail. Um, and I've just, I sort of looked at after 2020 happened, I looked at everything. I'm like, you know what? We need, as I look at the United States, the whole, I'm like, we need leadership and I don't see really strong leadership necessarily. Um, with, uh, on our national level, I do see some areas of leadership, but I definitely see some areas of lacking leadership. So I'm like, you know what? Let's see what it takes to get involved. And then I went and I found Sons of Liberty. And so they sort of taught me what politics is and, you know, what I should be looking for and, you know, as far as, you know, do I ever go to meetings? I never used to go to meetings. Yeah. I just, I didn't have time. I had this going and this going. And they're like, well, why don't you go to meetings? So then I started going to city council meetings, look at how the city's doing stuff and then Ward County meetings and, you know, and then I'm like, wow. I said, you know, I look at the, and look how much money they spend and I'm like, that's all our money, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's all our money. And I said, so why do they spend it that way? And, and it not, they don't spend all the money bad. It's not like they're a hundred percent wrong, but I, I just, it was a learning curve for me to see how they spent money, what they spent money on, you know, how, what part of that money came from state federal funds for like infrastructure and stuff like that. So as I was learning all that, I'm like, wow. And I said, I should, I should just get involved at the local level just to, um, help bring the leadership that I think we should have at the local level. And that's, you know, that's the main reason I started.
So I assume, well, I guess it doesn't really matter. Why, why Ward County Commission?
Well, I was gonna, I was talking to, um, Bless them and I'm like, you know what? I'd really like to run for city. And they're like, you know what? Be honest with it. They're like, I, we have three people running for that we think can get in the city. They said, I see what you're saying about, you know, other things. You would probably be better at the county. And so I, I took that with a grain of salt. I'm like, okay, fine. I'll, I'll run for county. Um, so, and then I just kept learning about what county, you know, is doing and.
Right. Yeah. Very, very interesting. Yeah. City has obviously gotten a lot of attention this year in part two, those three. Um, that ran together and were able to get on the, on the council. Um, and now county is gonna start getting a lot of attention. You mentioned small box, big box. Now are you kind of looking out of the box?
Yeah, that's right. I am looking out of the box. Honestly, um, what I, what I like about working like small box retailer or big box retail is you get to be with the common people. Yeah. I think a lot of times what happens is we get people that are elected to office and they lose what matters to people because maybe they're in, maybe that's all they do is just politics.
Right.
And they just, they never meet with people except for their group of friends. And I think we lose that common touch. Cause like right now, people are broke. They're hurting right now.
Are, are you, you're hearing those in the conversations when you're knocking doors or whatever you're doing?
When I'm knocking doors, when I'm talking to people at work, cause I know a lot of people, um, well, I shouldn't say a lot, but I know a fair amount of people.
Yeah.
Um, uh, but I, I see people and they're like, man, and when you're maybe sometimes when I'm ringing register and I, I see people use three different credit cards to try to pay for one transaction. It reminds what happened back in 2008 when the economy was really, really stressed and depressed. And there wasn't a lot of money going around. That's what's happening now. And I see people are hurting. I'm like, man, we've got to do something to help these people because if we don't have people, we don't have anything.
Right. Absolutely. Absolutely. So you made this decision to run for, for Ward County. And one of the things that played into it was strong leadership. You mentioned that at least at the federal level that, um, maybe we're lacking that a little bit. Do you feel like that there is a need for strong leadership in Ward County as well right now?
Absolutely. So if you look at who we have right now, we have Chairman Feldahl, who is very good. He's done it for, I think, what 16 years now? He's very good, a very conservative man. He's a good, strong leader. But I look at him and he also had, he had his support, which is Bucky Anderson. Him and Bucky Anderson saw eye to eye in a lot of things. Um, and so I'm, I'm looking at both those people. I'm like, man, but Commissioner Anderson's retiring. So with him retiring, I'm like, well, someone needs to help support him because he has a lot of good ideas and a lot of things are like, man, we should do this. Like there was a, a second amendment proposal that came across there that would give more rights as far as second amendment goes to the people in the county. It was voted down. Bucky Anderson, Chairman Feldahl didn't vote, vote it down, but the other three did. And I'm like, it's just simple stuff like that, that I'm like, why would we not do more to help our citizenry? Especially considering all the illegal aliens that are coming in, they're even coming into Ward County. Yeah. So with that being said, why would we not do more to keep people safe?
Okay. So what would you say are top three issues are that you're running on?
So my top three issues simply would be number one, fund the basics.
Okay.
We need to take our focus and narrow down, fund the basics. Second thing we need to do is not grow government. We don't need to grow on a, go on a growing spree. And so, cause we, people don't understand, every time we hire an employee, every time we build a new building, we are growing the government.
Yeah, that's great clarification.
Okay. Cause that's your money and my money that we're spending to grow the government. So I'm not a fan of growing government.
Right.
So we need to fund the basics, not grow the government. Cause at the end of the day, the more we grow the government, we're gonna have to raise taxes and nobody wants their taxes raised. Hence the reason measure four is on the ballot because people are sick and tired of their taxes getting raised. And I, and I understand that. And the third thing is I promise to listen to people. The reason I feel that people are measure, reason measure four is on the ballot, I think, is because people understand that they're not being listened to. That's why we had almost 42,000 signatures to get this on the bout because people want to be listened to.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, that's, those are my three commitments to people.
I think it'd be fair to say that when a person's elected, that in order to get elected, they had to listen. Is that fair?
Oh, that's fair.
If you don't listen, you're probably not gonna get elected.
Very fair. Yes, sir.
When does that disconnect happen and how are you gonna avoid it?
So that is a great question. And I think one reason that happens is because they get the idea that their job is simply philanthropic. Their job is to simply go out and help everybody they possibly can. Using all the resources at their disposal. We gotta just help everybody. Oh, this, this, we need to build a new building because we've gotta house these people. We've gotta take care of these immigrants that just came over. We've gotta do this and this and this. And it's like, wait a second, timeout. We put you there to run this to keep it simple, just like I run a business. I don't run a business. I don't give a ton of stuff away.
Right.
Because I'm there to make a profit. Yep. But I take care of my people. We've got to come back to the realization that in government, our job is to run that thing like a business and to take care of our people. And if we can't do all these nice things, build all these nice buildings, we can't do all this other stuff, that's okay. But are we taking care of the basics? Are we taking care of our citizenry? And I think that's the, one of the big disconnects is we get so involved in just everything else and getting our focus on doing the good things, we forget the basics.
Right. And, and there's some difficult things that come up with a lot of nonprofits that impact Minot, um, that do knock on the county's door. I believe they, uh, Project B is one of those nonprofits that has knocked on the door. Um, and, and there are others. Is at a place where the county should be stepping in and supporting some of those things. Cause they do great things for the community and it do positive things that impact Ward County.
Yeah. And, and I'm not disagreeing that we shouldn't like never help these people. I'm not saying that, but I think we should make sure that our bases are, 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 our basics are covered first. And then let's say we have, you know, let's say we have a half million dollars sitting around. Yeah. Okay. We can say, okay, we've got Project B. There's this, uh, new home for these, um, young adults we started, uh, because they're out of foster care, but they're young adults. So they can't be in foster care anymore. So we have a home for them now. And so, and there's maybe another project going. So there's three projects right there. Why don't we see getting them 10, you know, 10,000 or a hundred thousand to each of those, make it even. So we're not favoring one above the other. But what I don't, what I don't wanna see is just over, going overboard, helping everybody, giving a hundred thousand dollars to every organization.
Stretching the budget.
Stretch the budget way too thin. And then what do we have? Oh, we gotta raise your taxes because you have the money.
So you, you did say though, and, and I'll call you out on this, and it's not much of a call out, uh, but $500,000 sitting around, like that could also, we, we saw, uh, city of Minot, the city council there go and begin to use reserves to pay for stuff to, uh, decrease the reserves and put money back in the taxpayers' pockets. How do you make that decision to go and fund something when you have five hundred? I understand that you're not gonna have $500,000 sitting around very often, right? When you're sitting there, but, but when you are making those decisions, how do you decide to put this back in the pockets of the taxpayers or to go and fund a nonprofit or, or something else? Help fund a nonprofit?
Right. You know, that's a great question. And I think at the end of the day, so the, the Ward County has a reserve of 1.5 million dollars, which is enough. Chairman Feldahl and.
That doesn't sound like very much.
It doesn't sound like very much, but that's about three months, I believe it is, or two months, something like that. So that, that's enough. We don't need to be, I'm not gonna pick on the city, but I'm gonna pick on the city. We don't need to be like the city that has 75% of their yearly budget stashed away. And we, they won't give one dime back to the taxpayers until Mr. Bless them, I will tell you, he did a great job giving seven point, I believe it was six, five million dollars back the next three years. So great job, Mr. Bless them, Fuller Samuelson, and everybody who voted for that. So.
It was a seven oh. It's, it's, it's hard to vote against something like that.
Right. But they had to bring it to the attention because they were, they were.
It would have never happened.
With the law. So at the end of the day, you know, I think we should take a look at when we're talking to how many charities we should fund and how much money we should give back to the taxpayer. I think when it comes to giving money back to the taxpayer, that should be a little more priority than it is now. Because at the end of the day, when is your, um, when have your taxes ever gone down from the county?
Yeah, probably not often. When was the last time? You would know.
So, so not, not very often, right? So almost not. Now, the county did do a good job last year. They kept the, kept taxes from rising. That it was very, it was a very slight raise versus going way up, right? So they're doing, they're doing decent there, but they need to continue that or give money back at the end of the day.
Okay. So, so let me ask this then, because we see the city of Minot and we see all the reserves. We see the state of North Dakota and it's a wealthy state.
Yep.
Right? And if you go and you look at the mill that the, the county has, it, it's not, it's not the largest mill in Minot. It's not the second largest mill in Minot. It's the third largest mill. They're not, they don't have a huge mill levy. That they're proposing. Is it possible that the budget amount that they have is just good enough as is that, that they're doing exactly what they're doing? I mean, eventually there has to be somebody that's doing it right.
Right. So I think they're doing okay. I think they could cut though. So here's something that I'm gonna branch off, hopefully another subject. Sorry. I'm gonna change subjects. Too bad, too much. But I think overall, if they go through and they do cut the budget, um, I think they can cut a little more to make it even or come in under. But there's one thing that concerns me is when it comes to growing government, they have their, someone come from the state penitentiary who wants to introduce a new drug to give to inmates who run drugs. Okay. It's very expensive. Okay.
Yep.
On top of that, it looks like they've already created the position for that and they're just setting it there. Okay.
Nice.
In my opinion, unless we're going to cut a different position, that position needs to get cut. Because there's only one person who would be allowed to actually administrate that drug because it's very specific.
Okay.
And so that person would come on staff a hundred percent, but it's supposed to take people who are on drugs and keep them from getting back into drugs again. Because the drug is more sticky to the cells of the human body versus these other drugs.
Are these things you anticipated learning about when you ran for Ward County?
No, but it's fun. Um, so, and so with these drugs being more sticky, even if they were to take a, a, a non-controlled, like, you know, cocaine or whatever, it would not stick to their drugs. It would pass through their system, which is sort of, I'm like, oh, interesting.
Right.
But here's the deal. If we're gonna bring this person on, we need to cut a different position. So we're not growing government.
Makes sense.
And then here's the other thing. If, what is the, this is what the, the state does. They're like, oh, we'll pay for it for the first year. It's free. Take it. Okay. Every other year, we've gotta pay for it though.
Right.
So if we are gonna go forward with this, we need to have a plan in place saying, okay, we're gonna cut this, this, this. To make sure we have enough money to pay for this, that'll take care of this problem. But I'm not sure. But here's the other, the other sticky thing to that.
Besides the drug.
Besides the drug, yes. Was besides the drug. The other thing that's, is interesting here is because we would be the only, uh, city that's administering this drug as far as I know. The state penitentiary already just drops her inmates in our, in our Ward County facility. They pay for them thankfully. But now how many more are they gonna bring up here to put in our facility that we don't, you know, that we're gonna have to care for?
Okay.
Uh, uh, then are we gonna have to grab more staff to take care of these people? And again, are we growing government at that point?
So go and looking at things from a broader scope, instead of the immediate grant monies here, we can make this happen. We'll figure out the rest. Taking a step back and be like, all right, that's great. If we can use this, let's do it. But from the broader scope, is this going to have bigger, larger ramifications on our budget in the future?
A hundred percent. Because let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars a year, you know, it blues to a hundred thousand. How are we gonna pay for that?
Right.
Now, I don't know if it will, just, just a, a number I'm throwing out there. But, um, I, I think we need to be very cautious about how we do this because we don't want to have to create extra work for our citizens to pay for and raise taxes because we made this bad decision. And the other thing I will say about this is I'm not against, don't get me wrong. I'm not against helping people who are on drugs.
Yeah.
It's not, I'm not against them, but I, I am against not having a plan. If we're gonna go with this drug, let's get everybody on board. Let's get all four cities to do this. And I apologize. I can't remember the name of the, the name, specific name of this drug. Well, let's get all four cities to do this. Let's get a game plan and let's really sit down, crunch numbers and see how much this is gonna cost. And then if the state really wants to make this happen for everyone, let's go ahead and see how much the state can kick in. And I don't mean one year. I mean every year. So we're not stuck cold in the bag.
Right, right. So, um, I believe the, uh, I, I guess I don't have that. That's fine. We'll, we'll, we'll move in a different direction. All right. So we've jumped in and we've dove through some of the, uh, intricacies of budgets, which is a huge reason why people are being activated into politics in the current day. But before we do that, who's Jedidiah?
So who am I? Okay. I, I'm a, I'm a store manager. I manage Petco. Um, I'm a, I'm a father. I have four children. I have a wife. Uh, Clarissa is my wife. We've been married for, oh, man, it's bad. I don't even remember how many.
Bro.
Married. I'm sorry. Don't show my wife this. Good luck. So I'm in trouble. Anyway, so I've been married for, oh, I think, I don't know. I think about 14 years now, 15, somewhere in there. Um, it's not, it doesn't seem like we've been married that long.
Yeah, yeah. It's just flying by. I can't remember how many. It's just flying by.
Flies by.
Feels like five.
I got four kids. Three of them are in Perkett Elementary. The other one's still at home. Um, so all four girls, God has blessed us with girls. And it's been honestly, it's been a good growing experience for me, being a father. Um, they, um, I, there's no boys. So I'm like, well, it's just me and the girls. So.
It seems like that happens a lot in North Dakota.
I don't know why, but I, it's, it's, I'll, God has a plan. So we just keep rolling with it. It's all good. Um, but yep. And I just, you know, I'm just an everyday person. I'm nobody special. Yeah. But I just feel we need some, like I said, leadership.
Right. Going to that, cause you're, you're about to jump into a question. So I just wanna formally ask the question. Uh, you talked about why you chose to run for Ward County that you're looking at general, but overall, lack of leadership, it, that's simply what it comes down to. That, that's what inspired Jedidiah to get into politics was the lack of leadership piece on the national stage.
Absolutely.
Is there anything more to it?
Well, that and.
We, we talked about budget. We haven't talked about leadership at all. Seems like that, seems like that's a driving factor as well.
Right. And I, something I always sort of wanted to get into, I guess, when I was, since, since I was, you know, younger, I'm like, ah, it'll be fun. Just never made it a priority, I guess.
Yeah.
But, um, when it comes to leadership, you have to be able to say no.
Right.
Because honestly, when you're running a business, you have to say no to a lot of nice things, a lot of good things. A lot of people are, well, I could do this. No, it's not at the budget. This is not how, uh, corporate wants or whatever. You have rules you gotta follow. But at the end of the way, a good leader says no, explains the reason why.
Yeah.
And sometimes they say, yes, we're like, let's do it. But there's a purpose and a set out plan behind it. You have to have a plan going into this stuff. You have to have a plan to be like, hey, you know, how are we not gonna grow government? You know?
Right.
You know, not, we're not gonna do it by, we're not building new buildings. You know, we're not, you know, hiring a whole bunch of new people, you know? Not saying if there's not a need, well, not saying that if there's not a need, we won't look at it. But I'm just saying, it's not, we're not just gonna go on a spending spree because it's not our money. It's the people's money. Yeah. It's your money. It's my money.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah. And it, it's interesting because city of Minot, and this isn't Ward County, but city of Minot said, hey, you're gonna see a, we're gonna do our best to keep it at the same level. And it, when people got their preliminary tax statements, there was an increase basically across the board. Still, everything got increased, including Ward County. And, and I'm sure Ward County will do some stuff to, to pare that down a little bit. Um, what are some things? I'm sure you've taken a look at this year's budget, the preliminary budget. Um, what are some things that you would like to see maybe decreased out of that? That, that puts you on the spot heavy.
Right. So there is, there are several things. Um, so one thing we really can't touch right now is Health and Human Services.
Okay.
The, the reason why is because the state has taken control over all health and human services from the counties.
Wow.
And the reason behind that is, and what I'd like to see as far as health and human service, let me preface it first, is I would like to see, before we give any money out to people, there's several things we should number one, double check. Number one, we should double check if they're American citizens.
That's fair.
Just, that's fair. You're, you're here. You shouldn't be riding free on everybody's dime.
Right.
The second thing is that I would like to see, um, is I would like to see, make sure these people are, you know, actually, actually need it. Cause sometimes people, you know, I've seen it. I've, I'm from Michigan. So I've seen Detroit.
Hey, we didn't hear about that part in your bio. You're from Michigan.
I am from Michigan. Um, I'm from, okay, I'm from Michigan. I'm from a little town. So if you're from Michigan, you know what I'm doing. There's a little town right there called Ross Common. That's where I'm from. Nine hundred people.
All right. See, so, and Michigan must be shaped like a hand.
It's shaped like a hand. That's where God put his hand on the earth. Nah, I'm just kidding.
Unbelievable. I know that's not true.
That's, that's right. Um.
Must have been his left hand.
That's right. He must have been his left hand. Um, yeah. Well, he held it like this and he created the world. Boom. And then he spun it. You're good. Um, so, um, yeah, I'm from Michigan and, and you know, we would see fraud and it was like 12 people, 18 people living in one house, but they were all living in a different house, but they all got welfare checks. They all were driving cad lax. You know what I'm saying?
It's a good life.
You, you, you see that and we just, we wanna make sure that these people actually need it and they're not taking advantage of us.
Right.
You know? So I mean, so for example, in, in the business world, you see this as well. So yet people are like, oh, I can't believe this. Okay. I'll take care of one time. You write their name down. Kid you not, five weeks later, oh, I can't believe this happened again. I helped you five weeks ago.
Right.
Are you sure this happened again?
Yeah.
But at what point do you stop giving them free stuff?
Right.
You know what I'm saying? At what point do you stop helping them? Cause if you, if you are always helping them, are you really helping or are you enabling?
Yeah.
I mean, cause I don't want, so I don't want to, if someone's a drunk, I'm not gonna go buy my beer.
That's fair.
Because I'm not helping them. They're like, but your help, they're, they're, they're good for an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah, an hour. But I don't want them, I don't want to be good for, I want to be good for the rest of our life.
Yeah.
So we need to be sure that this is there to help them, get them through a rough time and is not a lifestyle for them. Cause guess what? I need help. Every other, every other place in town needs help. Why would we pay people to stay at home if they don't need the help? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And, and I'm not, I'm not saying we're gonna kick everybody off. I'm not saying we're gonna, we're gonna go, we go rogue. Cause again, the state's controlling that. We need to get, we need to get, um, we need to get our control back so we can look at it. But, um, I'll, we'll get back to that. Cause I, we've got, you gotta answer your question. Um, there are several others, uh, areas of the budget. Uh, Chairman Feld, Feldahl was talking to, we were talking about it in there. I can't remember right off the top of my head, the two, I probably should have written that down, that he was saying, but there are some areas that we have. It, it's gotten a little big and we can, we can trim it down a little bit. We're not talking about cutting whole departments, but there are areas we can, um, trim it down. I was, I was, the one place that we can is that position I talked about earlier.
Yep.
Is that there with that new drug they wanna bring in, that new person that has to administer it. If we're gonna bring that person in, we need to cut somewhere else.
So I'm gonna ask you a, I think it's a difficult question.
Yeah.
Okay. And I liked Chairman Feldahl. We tried to get him on the podcast and it just schedules haven't worked. Nothing. He's been responsive. It's just schedules have not aligned. And so eventually that'll happen. Um, but I mean, you mentioned been on there for around 16 years. He's been on there for a while, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
And were you, you, I guess, I'm, I'll put you on the spot here. This, were you for or against term limits?
So I was for term limits. Absolutely.
And, and I'm gonna cut you off there, which is a little bit unfair. Cause I understand that a lot of people were for term limits, but they don't like how it was implemented. Maybe need to have an extra four year term. But my point is he's been there for a while and that's somebody that you've referenced several times. It, or do you have concern with there being, um, and there's a, other, uh, Ward County Commissioners that have been there for a while. It's not just Feldahl. Um, or do you have concern with, with the extent that some of these people are sitting on, on those boards? We see Minot City Council, there's a few that have been there for a long time. And sometimes it creates a feeling that maybe there's complacency, uh, that, that creeps in. Do you think that's a concern that should be addressed at, or, uh, brought up at the Ward County Commissioner level?
You know, I think that's fair. I mean, I, I did vote for term limits. Um, because I think what happens is that if there's never a need for someone else to get in there, people don't step up.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So, um, and when you look at it, it, it should be, like, you know, if you look at the military, um, they do something similar. What they do is they're like, okay, you need to train the person below you.
Yeah.
To do your job.
Right.
Because when you move on, that person has gotta be ready to go. And I, I think it's only fair that, um, when you have people who have been there a while, that I, I think it, I, I, I think it is fair that, that we, they train the next person to get ready to replace them. Cause at the end of the day, I, I think that we have a lot of career people that have been elected there a long time, that are disconnected from the people. And it's not that they don't like their jobs, not that they don't, um, know people. I think, I think they are getting disconnected.
Right.
Um, and I think the reason is because they don't branch out outside of their people they know. They don't get out in the community and they don't meet other people and be like, hey, what's killing you? Cause every door I knock on, look, I knock on doors every night, Bernard. And I'm like, hey, what do you need fixed in Ward, in Ward County? Okay. Most of them are like, I think the county's doing pretty good. If you wanna talk about city, I've got a list. And I'm like, okay, that's, that's, that's fair. Um, but for the most part, I think people don't ask those questions. And I think there's a disconnect. So if we were to term limit, do you think, are you asking if I think we should term limit?
I don't know that, I don't know that term limits should ever happen in the county, just more from the idea of should there be more turnover at, at a county position like that than, than what we're seeing?
I think so. And I think partly why some of these people are still in is if you, we have a primary in this state.
Yeah. And, and, and I think like, let me add this to it because we can talk about Feldahl and we can talk about Weppler. And we can talk about, I don't know how long Olson's been there. Obviously Bucky Anderson is stepping down, um, and Ross did. It's been there for a while as well. Um, but potentially in November, there's a guy by the last name of Radar that, that gets elected in and beginning next year, he, he joins that commission. And perhaps, and I know this is very futuristic, but 12 years from now, you're still on it. Is that gonna be a thing? Is this something where you're gonna be on here for 20 years?
I don't wanna be out here 20 years. I wanna go in, help fix the county, get things where they need to be, help. Because Chairman Feldahl has a lot of good ideas. Help him put his, his, some of his ideas through. It's like the second amendment, you know, measure that came up, things like that. Let's get that stuff through. Let's help fix our county. I don't always wanna be on the county board. I don't always wanna be a lifetime something because again, I don't want, I can be, I'm just as susceptible as anybody else.
Right.
To being disconnected from, and that's not what I want.
Right.
So at the end of the day, um, I would rather, you know, do it for a little while, help fix things, get it moving in the right direction, train the next person and get them up. You know, I don't wanna be on there forever.
Day before primary day, you're looking at the list and you're like, dude, I'm in. It's just me and Shelley. We're running for three seats and there's two of us. I got this. Day after, you're like, dude, I'm going against six people.
Yep.
That had to be something.
You know, that was, that was interesting. I, I was, I did not anticipating, I did not anticipate Shelley Weppler and myself being the only two that turned in.
Right.
Signatures. I'm like, and you're right. I'm like, um, okay, but six people, I'm like, you know, I, you have, have to understand that there's six people running for three seats, right? I was a little taken back. I'm like, okay, well, we're just gonna give. there's six people running for three seats, right? I was a little taken back, I'm like, okay, well, we're just gonna give the best we got. But you know what? God always provides.
Yeah.
And I don't think if there were, I don't think if there were twelve people running, if, I know that's not possible, but if there were twelve people running, if I'm supposed to be there, I think God will make it happen. So, but, uh, cause I believe God is sovereign, he can do what he wants with what is his. So at the end of the day, I mean, it was, that was a little bit of a take back. I'm like, wow, I was hoping, uh, like Ron Merritt would get on there. I'm like, okay, good, Ron, he's a conservative. And I'm like, wow, six other people, I said, well, this is gonna be a fight. Okay, let's go.
Let's go, let's dig in. Let's go. Yeah, that's interesting. Is that a fair process, you feel?
So.
Now, you're, you're set off, you're impacted the most by this. Well, you and Shelley are impacted the most by this.
You know, it's, it's the law of the land, so I, I guess it's fair. So, um,
Okay, so all laws are fair.
No, uh, but honestly, honestly, person, my personal opinion, I think primaries favor the incumbent. And what I mean by that, look at state and local, uh, and like state, county on up elections, right? So county on up elections, if, um, I have, because I've been on, let's pretend I've been on Ward County for four years, right? And I'm, I'm, I'm running again. So I'm like, you know what? Primary's coming up, I wanna knock some of my competition out. I'm gonna put four grand into this. So I get my election, uh, person who hopes for my election, I'm like, alright. Campaign manager, let's get this going, here's four grand, put out ads, signs, let's get it done, right? Who is that, how is that fair when the next person who's never been in politics before is paying everything out of pocket and only can put together about five hundred bucks?
Okay.
So in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, um, but my opinion, primaries, we shouldn't really use primaries, in my opinion, from, from Ward County, from county up, it should be just the general. Because at the end of the day, it's fair that way.
Interesting.
You say, well, there's gonna be more than, more than, you know, two people running or three people running. Okay, so let's say we have five people running for US House of Reps. You know what? Now that means it's not a safe place to be and everybody has more, that much more longer, that much longer to raise campaign funds and we can all fight it out at the end.
So we kinda stepped outside of even the county spot right here.
Right, yep.
You're talking a little broader than that.
Yeah, I, but I, even for county, that would be a good idea.
Cause, I mean, it happened this year.
Right, but I think that would help because at the end of the day, that would give those people who didn't run that didn't turn the three hundred signatures, it would give them a longer time turning their signatures.
So you think even the people, wow.
Because it would give them a longer time.
This is a hot take, man.
You know, maybe I'm wrong, but I just, I feel that the primary favors the incumbents and doesn't favor the little guy. And you know what? I, I, I don't mind, I mean, I'm an
So, eh, I interrupt you, but, but, uh, the reason is, it favors them and you're talking about money. And you're saying it's really hard for somebody that's jumping into the race to be able to fundraise before they're on the general election ballot, basically, is a premise that you're, you're presenting.
Well, yeah, and because you only, you can, there's a time limit where you can fundraise, right? So, and then you have to have your three hundred signatures too.
Right.
So you gotta be like, hey, you know, so if you wanna start in, you know, let's say you gotta raise five thousand dollars, okay? So you gotta raise five thousand dollars, right? So you need all that race. That means you're gonna have to, to get on the, the primary is in June, right? So you have your primary in June, so that means you need to have your three hundred signatures done no later than probably March. Okay?
Yeah.
And then you need to be fundraising that entire time as well, to try to get five thousand dollars. Whereas if you didn't have the primary, you wouldn't have to do that to November. So you have that whole year from November to November to fund, to, to work your connections and all that other stuff.
Even longer than that, you got
Right.
Basically two years.
Yep.
This year though, we saw that people didn't have to get those signatures.
Yep.
Just had to get a write-ins.
They got three hundred votes, yeah. And I think that's interesting. I mean, I'm, I don't, I don't mind one way or another. Because at the end of the day, the people of Ward County, people of mine are gonna put in who they want.
Yeah.
So it is what it is, but I, I thought, you know, to, in my opinion, so if you look at like Rick Becker's race.
Yeah.
Right? He lost.
Yep.
Okay, now, I voted for Rick Becker, I like Rick Becker.
Oh, maybe you lost a vote right there.
Yeah, I, I could have, you know, if you don't vote for me, it's, I, I understand. So, uh, but at the end of the day, in my opinion, I thought he was a better candidate and in my opinion, I would rather him go through till November and not have a primary, but that's, that's how, that's how, just how it went. So, I don't know, it might not, I, I could be totally wrong. Again, I'm new, I could be totally wrong at this.
We're, we're, uh, we're talking about an issue that, that is much bigger than, than even a Ward County race. It, it would change a lot of things in the election. Don't, in North Dakota, you could even talk about, uh, the relevancy of, at least for the, on the Republican side, the, the convention, things like that and how it's used. Um, that would all tie into that. But jumping back to Ward County, we kind of asked about what your main three priorities were. But I wanna ask you this, what are three concerns that you, that Ward County should be looking at over the next four years?
So, there's three things I think definitely, three, at least three things the county should look at. Number one, I think we need to be very careful about how many projects we get into. Okay, because look, there's, they've done a lot of work this year. And I mean, they've put a ton of gravel down in certain places. They've been doing bridges, 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 which is great. We just need to be very careful not to overextend. So I, I would say that's my primary concern because just, I, I, I feel that sometimes because we're like, oh, we got this federal grant. Yes, guess what? It's like a hundred million dollars. So let's break on all these projects. You're like, okay. How much is this gonna cost us again?
Yeah.
Because the, the federal grants, state grants do not cover the whole thing, in most cases. Now, sometimes they do. But they, they don't in all cases. So we need to make sure just because we get a grant, doesn't mean we have to use it.
Right.
Now, I'm not saying we're like, ah, forget it, we ain't gonna use your grant. You know, I'm not saying we do that either. But I'm saying we just need to be careful, number one, not to overextend with all these grants that we do get. And then the other thing I think that is, um, something to prepare for, I need to, we need to have a good game plan in, in, in line in case Measure Four passes. So if Measure Four goes through, what is our game plan there? Okay, it's also gonna depend on the state too. You know, but what does, what does the game plan look like there?
Right.
You know, i- i- it is, do we have a solid game plan? Now, don't get me wrong. Uh, I believe, uh, the exact percentage, I'm not sure of the exact percentage of how much of, um, the, the county budget is, um, property taxes. I, I wanna say the number I remember is eight percent, but I could be wrong on that. But it's not twenty percent.
Right.
It's a low percentage. So can we just absorb that? That would be the easiest solution, can we just absorb that? And if we do, where do we absorb it at? Do we slow down a project? Like, there's, there's ways to absorb eight percent. Um, either we, but we can, we can absorb it, or is the state gonna give us extra funding?
Yeah.
We could do that as well, apply for respect to funding, see if they'll help us out there. So that's all independent of how the state handles it too. So it's, it's six of one, half does the other of, of how, there's several areas it could go depending on how the state goes. So we just need to have a plan of saying, okay, here's Plan A, B, and C and how this could go.
Right.
Let's, let's have a plan for those.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's number two, right? So number three?
And number three, I would say, we just also need to be very careful, um, on on where we have, where we're putting our money and in how many, um, and what our ROI is, is coming back on them, where we're putting money. So if we're having a lot of projects, like, uh, Project B went bankrupt, okay? Okay, how much money did that cost us? You know, and we gotta be careful of that. And I'm not saying we don't help these people. I, I think it's our responsibility, we should help them. But again, I would like to see some more church involvement too. So what I like about there are certain stores in town, um, Marketplace, Cashwise. Some of these stores donate a lot of their stuff to the food pantries. Okay, so I, I'm thinking to myself, you know, what could they do if the county helped get them involved and more? What could we do? What could our local community do to get involved more? Cause, you know, I mean, they, um, there's the Lord's Cupboard, there's several other charitable things that we could probably um, help use to help other places if they were, if they could get involved. So I think we just need to be careful on how much we're giving out and what our return on investment is. Because if they're all going bankrupt, which a lot of them are, I understand that, you know, that's not helping us.
Yeah.
And then someone else brought out this great point going to that. It's interesting too, if we start giving money to every charity.
Right.
You know what happens to their donation drive in, in local?
What happens?
It shrinks.
Okay.
Why? Because people see us giving money to them and they're like, money, money, money. They're like, well, I don't need to donate to that, to the Lord's Cupboard, Cupboard, or to these other charitable donations, because the, the county's taking care of it.
Combined, they probably don't ask for as much either.
Right, well.
Probably both plays together, cause their budget's already met.
So, but yeah, we just gotta be careful.
Interesting, Measure Four, you come in here sporting this green little clip on your, on your lapel. You were, you came in here and basically asked for us to talk about Measure Four.
I did.
So here we are, okay? We're, we're meeting your expectation.
You're very kind.
Yeah, obviously, uh, it, eh, eh, at least in our area, it's probably split on what people's view of Measure Four is when you're looking at um, county officials and, and city officials. I, I guess I use the word officials, I should say are elected officials, um, at those levels. Why is this something that is good for Ward County, Ward County?
You know, the reason it's good for Ward County is you gotta understand, with the with everybody, a lot, you have a lot of people in Ward County that are fixed incomes. Okay, and with the inflation going up, the more money the federal government, you know, prints, the less valuable our money is.
Right.
So the last year, our operating per, uh, costs per household went up twenty percent, okay? If you're in a fixed income, you know what that, eh, equals out to? Twenty plus percent pay cut. So, we need to do everything we can to work against inflation by making sure our constituents, our taxpayers in Ward County have as much money as possible.
Alright, so let's put that in real numbers. You're saying that if someone is making four thousand dollars a month. That their, the costs that they were associated with that, that four thousand has to cover went up by eight hundred dollars.
That's about right, because if you look at your groceries, like in my business, all of our dog food prices from two years ago especially, have gone way up. It's not because we're price gouging people.
Right.
It's cost.
Yeah.
And, um, Petco's, you know, Petco's trying to make a living too, but it's the same thing everywhere.
And they got their name on a baseball stadium.
Right, I know, they could cut more. I, I agree, I tell them the same thing. But yeah, I'm a store manager, what do I know? Um, so, but no, eh, the costs have gone up dramatically. So, um, it used to be lunch meat was only like, you know, two nineteen.
Yeah.
And it's now four forty-nine.
Right.
I mean, everything has doubled and it's really hard. And so my thought is with Measure Four, if we were to end property taxes, that would put all that money back in everybody's pockets, which would be great.
But, but, I mean, that's great for the citizen, but is that good for Ward County?
Yes, because here's the deal. In the past, so they're gonna tell you there's no money. I was listening to, um, the Senate Majority Leader, David Hoag, I believe his name is.
Yeah.
Um, and the Senate Majority Leader said, oh, there's just not enough money to do this. Well, what he didn't say is that the past six years, they've raised over six billion dollars over their budget. So last year alone, just last year, they're like, hey, here's a budget, it's gonna grow. And the Senate's like, no, we're gonna go a billion plus dollars
Yeah.
over that budget. And you're like, wait a second, so we're spending an extra, we went from twelve, twelve billion dollars a year to nineteen billion dollars a year?
They, they, they would, were, be great at Petco Park, cause they'd be hitting it out of the park.
Right, so why can't we give, I think it's two point one four, something like that, billion dollars back to people to get our economy going? I mean, we, we've raised that much.
So, so it works at the state level, but now all of a sudden, county's not able to impose property taxes based off of assessments and stuff like that? Is there going to be a negative effect at the county level on your guys' ability to, uh, have revenue?
No, because again, what's gonna happen is the state's gonna come back, say, okay, so we, you guys, because we have vote, this got voted through by people, this percent of your budget, that like eight percent, we're either gonna have to replace it, okay? Okay, or we're gonna have to figure something else out. So it's gonna be a little turbulent and you have to have some strong people up there that'll say, you know what, we're not gonna go, we're gonna do knee jerk reactions, we're not gonna just raise everybody this tax or that tax. We're not gonna go up, you know, eight percent, eh, eight, every cent on a dollar is not gonna go to eight, eight and a half, nine percent, because we're scared what the state's gonna do. We need to figure out what the state's gonna do. The state can replace those funds, they have the money, we need to figure out what they're going to do. And then we need to say, okay, this is what the state's gonna do. So because this is what the state's gonna do, this is our plan going forward.
Okay, then let me ask you this. Does it affect the ability, eh, eh, it's tied to local control, that, that's the common term that's used for this. Does it affect the county's ability to have control over the necessities that it's supposed to be providing to the community that it supports?
So I would say overall, that, you know, just because we don't collect property taxes doesn't mean that, that we're not collecting any taxes. So we're gonna get funding one way or another. Gotta remember, seventy-five percent, I believe is the number. Seventy-five percent of our budget is either state or federal taxes, I mean, state or federal funds. So
It's crazy.
Yeah, and then where we really make our money, I'll tell you, is that half cent that we get on every sales tax. We make a lot of money that way. And so that's a huge part of our driver, uh, of the, of the county. So we, it, it's not gonna affect local control, because guess what? At the end of the day, we're just gonna say, okay, we're gonna get another eight percent from state. Doesn't mean that we can't put another half cent on sales tax if we need to, but we don't need to. We have the money, we just need to be strategic with it.
So I mean, I, I come from Oregon. I see you looking at me like that.
Oregon, where's, where about in Oregon?
Uh, west side, north, north, northwest, uh, west side of Portland.
Portland, west side of Portland, okay.
Hillsboro, so Hillsboro.
My assistant was from Oregon.
Okay.
And so is my grooming salon leader, she's from Oregon.
Good people come from Oregon.
Yeah.
So, um, but, I mean, one thing that's really interesting about Oregon, cause you're thinking about how liberal they are. You're thinking about how they, um, went and just said, any, any drug is fine, just legalize everything.
Right.
You're, that, that's the stuff you're thinking about, but this is one thing you probably didn't know about Oregon. Two things, one, there are no cell service gas stations, or, or they're very minimal. So you, you actually have attendants that come out and pump your gas.
Really? That's amazing, you guys are awesome.
And, and there's no snow there. So, I mean, I mean, there are in certain parts, but you know, they don't even need it, and, and it's happening. But the bigger, more, uh, weightier matter is the fact that there's no sales tax. I bet you didn't see that coming either.
I did not see that coming, you got me.
Because it's a liberal state and so a lot of times it's thought that they're probably, eh, now it's a liberal state, wasn't always that way. Now it's a liberal state, so it's thought that, you know, they're gonna be high taxes and stuff like that, which is for whatever reason tied to that. Um, I, maybe people think of California as the model there, um, but my point is, like, we're like, get rid of property tax, but let's just raise sales tax. Let's, I, I, this is, I've heard, you, you know, cities like, yeah, we probably can't get another half cent, but Ward County is like, yeah, maybe we can get another half cent. Mineup Park District's like, maybe, yeah, maybe we can get another half cent. Like, when are people gonna get sick of the sales tax going up?
No, I, I, the, and with sales tax, I think of it as, is we should, if you look at how much money we have in North Dakota, we have a lot of money in, 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 in state government.
Yeah.
We are the second highest oil-producing state.
Right.
We just beat Texas, which I like, I like, cause everything's bigger, Texas oil, ah, we just beat you guys. Anyway, um,
Anyway.
Cause I have family down there, so.
That's right, that's good.
It's all good, so I, I can rub that in. Anyway, so.
Yeah, I, I'm sure Michigan probably just lost to Texas or something like that. I, I, I think that happened, so, so, so maybe you heard about that too.
Well, we were, um, so, but at the end of the day, you know, we should endeavor to make our state as tax-free as possible. We should be going towards the model of Alaska. So if you look at Alaska, they don't have any taxes. As a matter of fact, you get a check back there for a couple thousand every year for a living there.
People voted that down in North Dakota.
I know. So that's what, but I, I think we need to do more to be as tax-free as possible. Now, it could be this Measure Four is gonna fail.
Could be.
Could be. I don't know. Eh, I, it seems like the more I talk to people, it's, it's gonna be close. It's gonna be close. But at the end of the day, I think people want control of their own money.
Okay.
And I, I think at the end of the day, the more that we use state and federal dollars to run the state and the less burden we put on people, the better off they'll be, because it's their money, let them spend it how they want.
That's fair. So obviously, November fifth is coming up, uh, month away, man.
Yep.
Month away. And so why should someone vote for you? Month away. And so why should someone vote for you, November fifth?
Well, I would say people should vote for me on November fifth, cause you need someone who is going to be strong, who knows how to say no to spending and who's gonna be conservative and will help protect your money that's at this, at the county. That's your money at the county, it's not mine. It's your money that's at the county. Well, it's mine too, I guess. It's our money that's at the county. So you want someone who's strong, who will be a fiscal conservative for you and that will also uh, protect the assets of the people that are in the county. So we should take care of our law enforcement, we should be cracking down hard on crime. That's, that's all things that should be happening. And you need someone who believes like most of North Dakotans, North Dakota, that North Dakotans do about family, about good community and not having, you know, crime and how about being able to spend their own money.
If someone wants to support you in your campaign, as it comes down to the wire, how can they do so?
Well, my address is eleven oh one Sixth Street Southwest, mine in North Dakota. You can mail me a letter.
Show up at your door.
You show up at my door, talk to me, I don't mind. It's all good. I love meeting people. Um, you, I'll be on the, uh, campaign trail, just knocking doors every night per near. That's what I do right now, except on Sundays. I give God His Day too. So Sunday, I give God His Day and then, um, knock door, doors pretty much every other day. And then there is, um, I have some business cards too. So I can have that and I got signed, so it's all good.
Very good. If, if someone wants to sign, they can reach out.
Yep, absolutely.
Sounds great. Well, really appreciate you coming on the podcast today, having a good, good back and forth.
Eh, I like it. Thank you so much. It was fun. Um, you know, and this is brand new to me, so I like doing new things, like meeting people and it was a pleasure, sir. Thank you for your time.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you for watching this episode of the Conversation here at the Dakotan. I'm Jonathan Starr. It's been a good one. We're gonna be having a couple more of these interviews with some candidates for the Ward County Commissioners. Obviously, Election Day is coming up on November fifth. Make sure you get out and vote, be a good citizen in your community. Thank you for watching this episode. Be sure to like and subscribe on YouTube, become part of the Dakotan community. Have a great day.